We didn't need the fantasy of courtesy of the president on our motion hearing. At this point, I'm really preaching to a public. But we'll get it. You know, I don't know. The sponsor of the hierarchy is saying, we can't be set in a set of rules. Or any purpose means for any purpose. They could interpret.
All right. All right. Thank you.
So. I found in the lectures. Okay. Watch me. We do it right after. Yeah. That's my family. Except if it might. That's something like that. Later. If I might have been there, I would make those dollars. I mean, I would. What did you say? Uh, not yet. Uh, what's it? And I thought you were reading. Change. Uh, yeah. Exactly. I don't know if it was in the owner. The taxes. It wouldn't surprise me to find out. We actually went the right way with White. I don't think we've turned around. Yeah. Oh, wait a minute. Communications from the town.
I had to receive them.
No, what? Yes, you should. Because.
Okay, we are calling Dallas. We, whoa, this is gonna be fun. We are calling the community comments meeting to order. And we're gonna start with a roll call. Ms. Persson.
Mr. Barnes.
Present.
Ms. Cantor.
Here.
Mr. Davidoff.
Here.
Mr. Dodge.
Here.
Ms. Fay.
Here.
Ms. Kerrigan.
Here.
Mr. Sweeney.
Here.
Mr. Winograd.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Thank you. And we have communications from Judy Allen regarding the state water plan. Whoops. Can I just?
Sure. Can I just fold it down? Is that okay?
That's fine. Thank you. I'm here to talk about the state water plan and why I think the town should support it. And I wanna point out Pat and Bill O'Connor, who are also West Hartford residents and also support the state water plan. The State General Assembly directed the Water Planning Council to create a state water plan for recognizing that there, a water plan that recognizes that there are many competing uses of water. They recognize that water is too precious a resource to be left to chance and that it's Connecticut's future, the future water, my glasses don't work, that requires planning for the future. The plan took two years of work by many experts, businesses, stakeholders, environmentalists, utilities, government agencies, and I'm proud to have my name on the plan as a contributor. It's important to point out that this is just a plan. It's meant to be used for guidance. It's not a law. It has no enforcement power. It's a working document and will be revised and reviewed in the years to come. An objection was raised about using the language of public trust in the plan and especially in the executive summary. The decision was made to include the language because the number one public comment overwhelmingly identified the need to emphasize water as being held in public trust. The Water Planning Council decided that so many comments could not be ignored and why else were public comments solicited? The inclusion of public trust language was made by citing the current state law and its inclusion, and it changes nothing. There has been concern that the plan could have financial implications for the town. For the most part, these seem related to economic development or the possible creation of unfunded mandates. The plan does not make recommendations regarding the use of water. It was careful to avoid words like should, must, shall, or anything that might be construed as a directive. The Planning Council is charged with implementation of the plan, but they have no power to create a regulation or direct anyone to do anything. It's a long process of putting any of this plan into action. There will be multiple ways the town's interests can be heard regarding any economic development issues or mandates. None of us wants to go back to a time when our rivers, streams, and lakes were so fouled we, they were not fit for swimming or boating, when fish caught could not be eaten. None of us wants to put our drinking water supply in jeopardy. The final draft of this plan has now been sent to the committees of cognizance and with their approval would then go to the General Assembly for adoption. The state needs this plan and West Hartford should support it because of the, because it will balance the competing uses of water for public health, environmental health, and economic development, and these are in the best interest of the town. West Hartford citizens need assurance that there is adequate, safe, clean drinking water now and for future generations. While it is an imperfect plan, it is important step forward, a living document that will be revised and reviewed, and West Hartford should support it. I'd like to suggest that the town pass a resolution in support of the water plan. I'm gonna stop here and I'm happy to answer any questions. I don't know if that's appropriate at this point. But I have lots of background information with me and I am more than willing to help with language or guidance in drafting a resolution if the council would think that was something you would like to do.
Thank you, Judy. We don't have any interaction. We receive comments. So thank you so much.
Do I have one more minute then?
Uh, I guess so. Yes, go ahead.
I'm just gonna put a flowery finish on it. Trout Brook was once the center of life in West Hartford. Along its banks were mills for various types of industry. It was the lifeblood of its economy. Once Trout Brook was polluted to the point that it could no longer support trout or other aquatic life. Now that Trout Brook has been cleaned up again, it's a path through the center of town, a place for walking, biking, or just sitting and watching the calming waters. The town is now in the process of determining a possible uses for the Yukon campus. At the recent public information session, it was clear that residents value open spaces. I spoke to a father who coaches Little League at the field closest to where Trout Brook crosses under Albany Avenue. He said kids like foul balls and it gives them the reason to go down to the Brook. There was a time when youngsters would have been told, no, stay away from that water. It's too dirty. So another reason to support the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. With that, I make a motion we close the public hearing. Motion's been made in second. Uh, not public hearing, public comment. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And we will go right into the town council meeting on March 12th. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, roll call, Ms. Reenie. Mr. Barnes.
Present.
Ms. Cantor.
Here.
Mr. Davidoff.
Here.
Mr. Dodge.
Here.
Ms. Fay.
Here.
Ms. Kerrigan.
Here.
Mr. Sweeney.
Here.
Mr. Winograd.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules to introduce two proclamations. Second. Motion's been made in seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. And we will first start with the Hunger Action Team proclamation. And I think, is Catherine Wilson here? Okay, come on up to the podium.
All right, so this is a proclamation. This is, well, it's self-explanatory, so I will just read it. Whereas the health and vitality of a community is reflected in the participation of its citizen in those activities, the further the strength of the town. And whereas food is the substance by which life is sustained, and whereas the type, quality, and amount of food that individuals consume each day plays a vital role in their overall health and physical fitness, and whereas there is a need for continuing nutrition, education, and a wide-scale effort to enhance health eating practices, and whereas the West Hartford Hunger Action Team continues to support, promote important nutrition programs in West Hartford, including school meals at every public school in West Hartford during the school year, and summer meals at several locations over the summer operated by West Hartford Public Schools, food backpacks distributed every weekend at select schools during the school year by Universalist Church and Gifts of Love, encouraging the donation of healthy foods to the food pantries in West Hartford operated by West Hartford Social Services, Jewish Family Services, Universalist Church, and St. Thomas the Apostle Church, nutrition education to supplemental nutrition assistant program recipients by the University of St. Joseph, and nutritious food distributed to eligible seniors every month through the coordination of West Hartford Social Services and volunteers from St. James Episcopal Church. Now therefore be proclaimed that on behalf of the town council, the residents of West Hartford, I, Mayor Sherri G. Cantor, do hereby proclaim the month of March as Nutrition Month in West Hartford and encourage residents to become concerned about their nutrition and the nutrition of others in the hope of achieving optimum health for both today and tomorrow. And I wanna thank the Executive Director of Food Share is here, Jason Jakobowski. And would you like to say a few words? No?
Not necessary.
I completely understand. Catherine, thank you so much.
Yes, thank you. Okay, there you go.
Thank you. And next, is Astrid here? Oh, wonderful. And Helen, I, okay, terrific. So we've had Astrid and Teresa and Helen from the, from Social Services, Director of Leisure and Social Services. And this is, it is Social Work Month and we are here to talk about some of the fabulous work that these two wonderful women do in our town does on behalf of our many residents. Whereas the social work profession is dedicated to enhancing the well-being of others and meeting the basic needs of all people, especially the most vulnerable in our society, and whereas social workers are present throughout our society, including government, schools, university, social service agencies, communities, the military, and in healthcare and mental health organizations, and whereas social workers are present in times of crisis, helping people overcome issues such as death and grief, and helping people and communities recover from natural disasters such as floods and hurricanes, and whereas social workers have pushed for decades to ensure rights for all and have helped bring about some of the most profound positive changes in our society over the past century, and whereas social workers continue to engage and bring together individuals, communities, agencies, and government to help society solve some of the most pressing issues of the day and protecting the environment, and whereas social workers embody this year's Social Work Month theme, social workers, leaders, advocates, champions. Now therefore be proclaimed that on behalf of the town council and the residents of West Hartford, I, Mayor Sherri G. Cantor, do hereby recognize the numerous contributions made by America's social workers and proclaim the month of March 2018 as Social Work Month and call upon all citizens to join the National Association of Social Workers in celebration and support of the social work profession. And we are so lucky again to have such remarkable resources right here in our own town. Thank you so much for all you do. They were here last, two weeks ago at our public hearing and waited for hours. So I apologize for that and thank you for coming back. All right.
All right, number four, Ms. Kerrigan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move approval of the minutes of the town council meeting February 22nd, 2018, February 27th, 2018, and the public hearing of 243 Steel Road on February 13th, 2018.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Public forum, there is nothing on the agenda that is not related to the town manager. It's subject to public hearings, so, right, there's no, no opportunity to speak tonight. Okay, number six, Ms. Kerrigan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move we place items 13 through 16 on the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Number seven, it's actually, we don't have any unfinished business. We're going to eight.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move we set for public hearing on April 4th, 2018 at 6:00 and April 11th at 2:00 in the Legislative Chamber in introduction of the 2018-2019 fiscal year budget as proposed by the town manager and superintendent of schools.
So before we move this and second it and move it along, I think Mr. Hart has a presentation for us. So, Mr. Hart.
Is this what we're gonna pray that the thing comes down?
Just need a moment or two to get our technology up and running. These moments last forever, don't they?
No. I know. I know.
Right.
Oh, come on. Of course, you're all gonna turn around and look at me.
I'm sorry. We won't.
Here comes our savior.
So while we're waiting, you also have hard copies of the presentation at your places so you can follow along. And you have two good-sized binders, the proposed budget as well as the proposed 12-year capital improvement program.
Just a reminder that when we vote, we're not voting on the budget. We are voting on the public hearings and the introduction of the budget, not on the budget itself.
All right, I think we're set. Very good. Well, thank you. I spoke too soon.
You guys don't wanna stay for that?
All right, we think we're good? Okay, for members of the public who are watching at home, Matt Hart, Town Manager. I'm very pleased to be presenting my first proposed budget to the council. At least I think I am. Let's see how you react to it over the next month or so. And I am joined here by members of the budget team, Peter Privatera, as well as Elizabeth Hewitt. Our purpose tonight, we want to present you with a pretty comprehensive overview, an introduction to the budget, if you will, leading into your various committee discussions. We've got a number of slides. I'll try to work through them in an expeditious manner and we'll save a little bit of time at the end if you have questions, but my understanding is the bulk of the questions are raised at your various committee meetings. So let's move forward here. So starting off with our first slide, and I think this is a very important one. As you'll see, the proposed budget, what we have here, the proposed general fund budget of a little over $288.3 million for next year. And that is comprised of three main sections, town services, the Board of Education, and capital financing. I am now looking at the bottom, the summary of expenditures. And you'll see on the town side, town services, an increase of a little over $4.8 million or 4.78%. The Board of Education, an increase of a little under $4.7 million or 2.94%. And capital financing, a little over $187,000, a little over 1%. So that leads to that overall increase. We, a couple of additional comments regarding this chart. Council will recall, when you adopted the current year budget, when you adopted the current year budget, you included a contingency of $7 million. Recall, the picture for state aid was quite uncertain. We were seeing a whole host of scenarios. We actually didn't even have a state budget until October. And I think for the council, it was important for you at that time to include this level of state aid to help demonstrate to our delegation and to the General Assembly how important that state aid was for West Hartford. And the plan was if you had received the money, you would have allocated it accordingly. And if you didn't receive it, we would make adjustments at the end of the year. So that's the scenario that we are, that we are in. And what we have prepared here is this, you'll see to the, to the left, we've got the FY18 adopted column. That is the budget you adopted for the current year. And then we have FY18 restated. And the restated column is net of that contingency. It's net of that contingency. We pulled it out. And that's very, very important because we wanna try to provide you with an apples-to-apples comparison, the current year versus next year. If we had left the $7 million contingency in, the increase is approximately 1%, a little under 1%, I believe. So we wanted to be fair in our analysis, which is why we've presented it in this manner. A quick snapshot of next year's budget. So as I just said, when you're comparing next year's budget against the current year restated budget, you'll see an increase of a little under 3.5%, 4.78% on the town side, 2.94% for education, and a little over 1% for capital financing. In order to finance this budget, management is recommending that we move to a uniform mill rate, a uniform mill rate of 41.54 mills for next year. This would be an increase of half a mill for real and personal property, and it would be a more sizable increase for motor vehicles, 9.54. And we'll provide some detail behind our recommendation as we move forward here. Another quick snapshot, this is the general fund, which is broken down into three main categories, the town budget at $106.2 million, the Board of Education, $164.5 million, and capital financing of a little under $17.6 million. And then we will also touch on our 12-year capital improvement program. And for the 12-year plan, we have a figure of $197.6 million. So in putting together, in putting together the proposed budget and capital improvement program for next year, you know, what was management trying to achieve? What was driving us here? How did we structure this budget? Well, we worked very hard to produce a responsible budget, a responsible budget for our community and something that would strike the right balance, the right balance between spending and tax increases. And obviously, you will ultimately make that determination. Secondly, it was very important to us to maintain all of our current services and programs. And the budget does that. All of our current services and programs remain in place. However, we are not recommending any additional new programs for next fiscal year. A third objective that we're working to achieve with this proposed budget is to increase our undesignated fund balance. We're proposing a long-term plan to reach a 10% target. And recall, for the current year, we'll be increasing fund balance by roughly a percent from 8.1% to 9% by June 30th of this year. We're proposing that as we move forward, we work, we seek to build fund balance by roughly a tenth of a percent, a tenth of a percent per year. So this budget does have funding, I think it's about $293,000, to bring fund balance to 9.1% by June 30th of 2019. And I'll talk in a moment or two about why we think this is important. A couple of other key policy objectives in putting this budget together. The town has been working for several years, as you know, to address various unfunded pension liabilities. And this year, we talked about reducing the discount rate from 7.5% to 7.25% to better reflect asset growth projections. And we may seek, we may recommend to bring that even lower over a period of time. But whenever you lower your discount rate, as you know, it comes at a cost. Another key objective is structuring the budget to address what's called our other post-employment benefits, or OPEP. That's the acronym. We've got lots of acronyms here. And we've included increased funding in this budget to cover what's called your actuarially determined employer contribution, the ADEC. It used to be referred to as the ARC, the Actuarially Required Contribution, in accordance with our 10-year plan. And then last but not least, this budget recommends a targeted use, a conservative use, a prudent use of current year surplus in an effort to reduce our liabilities for next fiscal year. So let's spend a moment or two talking about fund balance, which we just quickly addressed. So what this slide shows you are the last several years, our undesignated fund balance, starting with 2008 and working up through the current year, with the current year's 9% target. And you can see the figures on this chart. Again, the budget proposal for next year does include some money to increase that percentage to 9.1%. Why is fund balance so important? Let's recall the conversation we had a few months ago. So for decades now, West Hartford has enjoyed the highest bond rating available, you know, through the rating agencies, a triple A rating. We've had that for a long period of time. Why is the credit rating important? A credit rating drives your interest rate. The interest rate that the town... The interest rate that the town will pay on the bonds it issues. The better the interest rate, the lower the cost to the taxpayer. So that's why this is key for us. Late, last year, council will recall, Moody's, they did maintain, they maintained our AAA rating, however, they issued a negative outlook for the town. And they were concerned primarily about two factors. Number one, our reliance on state aid, and number two, the level of our undesignated fund balance. And our level of undesignated fund balance is low compared to various other AAA communities, which average about 13.5%. So that's why we think it's important to increase this number over time, but we understand it does come at a cost. Now let's talk for a moment or two about the use of surplus for the current year. And this surplus has built up over the last couple of years. There are various reasons for that, which we can address in committee. But we're recommending, and this would be subject to council's approval, that we utilize current year surplus for these key reasons, the debt service fund, utility services, capital non-recurring expenditure fund, which we use for various capital projects, as well as a contribution to the risk management fund, which covers our liability insurance, our auto, our property, as well as health insurance. So that, we just talked about the structure of the budget, what we are hoping to achieve in designing this proposed budget. Now let's transition to a discussion of revenues. Let's talk about the revenue outlook for next fiscal year, starting off with the grand list, the grand list for property taxes. Well, as you'll recall, a couple of months ago, we announced some positive news, you know, we had some good measured growth with the grand list this year, we increased by a little under 0.78 of a percent, and that is good sustained growth during this type of economic period. Real estate increased by 0.48 percent, it's primarily due to some new commercial and residential projects that you'll recall. Personal property increased considerably more on a percentage basis, 8% for a variety of reasons, new businesses, as well as capital investments that people made into existing businesses. The assessor's office has also been working hard and with good success on personal property audits, just to make sure that folks are paying their fair share. The motor vehicle list did increase by a little under 3 tenths of a percent, and we added 105 cars this year. So that's a snapshot of the grand list on the property tax side. Now let's talk about intergovernmental revenues, in particular municipal state aid. The governor's proposed budget for next year reflects a decrease of a little under $86,000 for next year, 0.4 tenths of a percent. While on its face, that may appear to be a negligible decrease, I would argue, especially over a period of time, it's becoming more and more challenging to absorb these. And what you'll see lower on the page here, this is a comparison to the town's adopted budget, when we assumed a certain percentage of state revenue. And you'll see that our projection for the ECS grant, education cost sharing, for example, what we'll actually be receiving is $2.3 million lower. This municipal grant for projects, the fourth bullet down, that we would see an increase, but you see the reductions elsewhere, and they total this, we would eliminate this contingency for state aid of a little over $7 million. I think this slide is helpful, too, to show you what's going on over the period of the last couple of years. And you look at the $21.1 million for next year, that is actually lower than what we received in fiscal year 14, you know, several years ago. And many municipalities across the state are in this position, where state aid has some fluctuations and is now decreasing. So looking at the revenue mix, we're very reliant on property taxes, 88.5%. Then you'll see intergovernmental at a little over 7%, as well as other revenue categories here as well. So now let's transition from talking about revenues to general fund expenditures. And again, this is a snapshot, we've already talked about it a little bit, but on the expenditure side, next year, we're proposing a general fund budget of $288.3 million, which would represent an increase over the restated budget of 9.7 million, or a little under 3.5%. And you can see the increases with respect to the town, the board of ed, and capital financing. Here's how it, the slices of the pie break down, where most of the funding would be going to our educational system, pre-K through 12, and this is true for every town, every town in the state. The bulk of the funding goes to our public school system. Some communities, your smaller communities, are as high as 80, 85, maybe even approaching 90% of a budget. Here in West Hartford, where we have more of a full-service community, full public safety department, et cetera, the split, the split is closer to 50/50. But 57% going to the schools, 37% to the town, and 6% for capital financing. Breaking it down a little bit further, you'll see various categories here, public works through education, education, again, the lion's share of the budget. I want to draw your attention to the next line above it, non-departmental, that includes employee benefits, as well as our contribution to the MDC and contingency. And then public safety, we have a good-sized public safety operation here in West Hartford for many important reasons, working our way up to public works. This, all other departments, includes a variety of departments. Here's another way of looking at the town side of the budget, where you've got wages and salaries compared to fringe benefits and insurance and operating expenses. And look how close, look how close the wages and salaries lines are to the fringe benefits and insurance. You know, very, very close, and we'll have some additional detail on that later on in this presentation. So now, let's talk a little bit about what's driving the increase in expenditures here. Let's first start off with the board of education, and obviously, the superintendent has presented his proposed budget to the board, I'm not going to take questions regarding his budget, however, we will have an education liaison meeting coming up. You'll see an increase of a little under $4.7 million, a little under 3%. Here are some key reasons, you've got an increase in salaries of about 3%. Medical insurance costs are rising nominally, they've had some good experience. This third bullet, this third bullet is important. Periodically, we need to true-up our pension fund and look at how costs are allocated between the town and the school district. And occasionally, there's a reallocation between the two. That is occurring this year, where the board of ed share is falling from 25% of the fund to the liabilities, to 21.3%. And this would be for that total annual contribution that we need to make. So this would result in a cost shift, a cost shift of approximately $876,000 from the school district to the town side of the budget. And school employees that are included in the pension fund, we are talking about non-certified staff here, we're talking about custodians, IAs, and others. All certified staff, teachers, administrators, or et cetera, are in the statewide plan, they're in the statewide plan. Otherwise, the percentage for the board would be much, much higher, because they have many more employees than we do. Now looking at town services, what's driving the increase in town services? $4.8 million, 4.78% increase. Here are some of the key issues. The MDC, we're seeing an increase of almost 11%, a little over $1 million. Debt service, debt service related to MDC projects is a big part of that. Some good news, really want to credit our public works team, and I'm sure you've, we've talked about this before, but we are seeing a savings of about $1.1 million due to a new contract we negotiated for refuse hauling. The pension, we just talked about it a little bit earlier, when we were talking about the shift from the school district to the town, this ADEC would increase by a little over $2.4 million for our next fiscal year. Health insurance for town employees and retirees that participate in the pool, there'd be an increase of about $968,000, and that's due to claims experience, we are self-insured. Contingency, we have set aside a sum, a little over $1.7 million, and that's due to unsettled labor contracts. So at the close of this fiscal year, all of our contracts will be up. And as you know, we're busy negotiating with several of our collective bargaining units. So let's spend a little bit of time talking about pension. You know, pension's one of our major cost drivers, you know, it's our 800-pound gorilla, right? And we've been working on it for several years now. While we still have some very significant challenges here, I think we also have some good news, due to the work, due to the work that we've done over the last couple of years. You can see that our accrued liability for the unfunded component of the plan, and once we make that adjustment to the discount rate, will be a little over 40% funded. I think the total liabilities are about $465 million. But you'll see the increase from 19 and 20, and then we begin to go in the opposite direction, which is good news. The ADEC, this contribution we need to make every year, in accordance with our actuarial analysis, this will continue to increase over the next several years through 2027, however, it's increasing on a more manageable level, if you will, less than 1% a year. And this is due in part, and you'll see this even more so on the next slide, it's due to the work we've done on pension, introducing a hybrid pension plan, increasing the employees' contributions to the plan. And our normal cost, the normal cost is what you need to contribute for your active employees. That's what you need to contribute for those folks, the folks who are working here today. And you'll see, due to the work we've done, how this is beginning to fall off over the years to come. So that is good news, it's still a big, big challenge, but we've got some good news as well. Another major cost driver that I talked about a couple of minutes ago is the MDC, and the increase in what's called the ad valorem tax. The ad valorem tax is for sanitary sewer service. The MDC does bill all of its users a separate bill on the water side. But the sanitary sewer service is built into the tax bill, our community, you know, we've been concerned for some years now as to whether or not this is the most fair and appropriate means for West Hartford, but this is still how the system is operating. Mr. Privatera and I are participating in an MDC project that's taking a look at the ad valorem, and whether or not we should convert to more of a user fee basis, which is typical, the user fee is really the standard industry-wide, but this remains a major cost driver for us. So we've just spent a lot of time on the general fund, let's move on to talk about the capital fund. Every year, every year, we present a 12-year plan, this is a quick snapshot of the revenues, capital non-recurring expenditure fund with approximately $25.4 million. Most of the funding, most of the funding would come in the forms, form of bonds under this plan, a little over $148 million. Federal and state grants of about $22.5 million. And other, this is mainly contributions from other funds, like leisure services fund, et cetera, at $1.6 million. So this is where you get to the total 12-year plan of $197.6 million. How does that 12-year plan break out in terms of major expenditure categories? So you can see the listing, most of the money would go to transportation and infrastructure, followed by education, and then you see a couple of other key categories as well, parks and recreation through miscellaneous. Let's now look at the next couple of years of the plan, which is typically what you will focus on in your committee meetings. I've just highlighted a couple of key projects for you. First, under transportation and circulation, this is the Trout Brook, excuse me, the Fern Street Bridge over Trout Brook. There are a couple of bridges on Fern Street, this is the one over Trout Brook, estimated at $4.2 million. We'll be getting $3 million in grants, and we'll be issuing bonds to cover the local share of $1.2 million under this plan. On the parks and recreation side, we have two park improvement projects in the plan, one for Wolkett Park and one for the Kennedy Park, and you can see the reasons here. Wolkett Park, this would be half a million dollars over two years, we want to upgrade the electrical, upgrade our tennis courts. The bath house, we want to renovate primarily to address accessibility issues, and that project's a little under $300,000. Those two projects would be funded from CNRE under our plan. A couple of other things we want to talk about, one is a switch to a new financial management software, I know we converted in the not-too-distant past. However, we do think another change would be appropriate, we want to spend some time talking through this with you at committee. We understand it's an expensive project, but this is a very, very important one for the town, of $900,000. And a replacement of fire apparatus, this would be a quint vehicle of $770,000. Those are just some representative projects over the next couple of years. Now let's spend a little bit of time talking about the impact on our taxpayer. Where do the tax dollars go? How do they break out between major categories of government, major departments, et cetera? And you can see the breakout here, from everything from community development all the way through education. And right above education, that non-departmental, which includes employee benefits, our contribution to the MDC, as well as other expenditures. But again, the lion's share going to education, which is typical statewide. Let's talk about the mill rate, and why we're recommending, why we're recommending a combined mill rate. So you'll see on the, to the far left, real property, motor vehicle property, our average single-family home, which is assessed value, this is 70% at $224,000. We've got, we built in an average taxpayer here, an average homeowner, and we do this every year. So we've got this average homeowner with these two vehicles, that assessed, assessed at $9,000 each. So looking at the current year, we've got a mill rate for real property of a little over 41 mills, and a motor vehicle mill rate of 32 mills. The motor vehicle mill rate was determined in part based on limitations set in state law when you adopted the budget, but then also, the council made a deliberate decision later this fiscal year, at management's recommendation, to keep it at 32 mills. We're proposing a combined mill rate for next fiscal year, for FY19. So it would be half a mill increase on the real and personal property, and a more significant increase of, at least on a percentage basis, of 9.54 mills for motor vehicles. And looking at our average taxpayer here, on the real estate side, they would see an increase of $112, a little over 1%. Their motor vehicles would increase by $172, that's a more substantial increase on a percentage basis, certainly of about 30%, which brings an overall increase of $284, a little under 3%, a little under 3% for our average homeowner here. We understand as we move forward, the council, you may want to look at different scenarios, especially as it relates to the motor vehicle mill rate, and we'll be prepared to walk through that analysis with you. We're recommending the combined rate, because we think it's really best for your typical homeowner, because the increase on the real estate side is more modest. So now let's take our average taxpayer, with the tax bill next year of a little over $10,000. How does that tax bill break out? How does it break down between various categories? And you can see, we've got everything here from community development down through education. So last subject I want to talk to you about tonight, I'd like to spend a few minutes talking about a long-term budget strategy. You know, I've been here some months now, I'm in my eight-month or so, and I'm in my eight-month or so, and I've been working on the budget pretty much my entire time here. You know, when I started with the community, we were still waiting on the state budget for the current fiscal year. There were a lot of things in flux. And I know that you, the council, as well as our management team, you've been focused on this issue for many, many years. You know, how really to grow our grant list in a sustainable way and how to control, how to best control and manage our expenditures. So I'm suggesting that we consolidate our current initiatives and add some new ideas as well into a long-term budget strategy, a long-term budget strategy that the Finance and Budget Committee and the council would pursue over a period of years to address these issues. Here are a few examples, and this includes work that we're already doing as well as some new ideas. First, looking at the revenue side, some strategies to promote sustainable growth and revenue diversity. Continuing our work with respect to business retention and recruitment, our economic development initiatives. You know, that's very important to us, and not enough communities really focus on retention. Everybody's always focused on recruitment. What's the next big business you can bring in? Well, retention is just as important, if not more important, focusing on current businesses and what their needs are. A second strategy would be redeveloping our key commercial areas, whether that is New Park Avenue, the center, or other places in town. And this past fall, you adopted some zoning changes to our zoning ordinances to facilitate this type of redevelopment in town center. Another suggestion would be to explore options to diversify, diversify our local revenues. Municipalities in Connecticut are very, very limited. You know, we rely very heavily on the property tax. We receive some state grants. We can charge user fees in a limited number of circumstances. Municipalities in other states have many more options, local sales tax, local franchise taxes, entertainment taxes, et cetera. We don't have that here in Connecticut. But what can we explore under state law? One example, and this would just be an example that we're talking about in the Public Safety Committee, is looking at transport for our paramedic service. We're talking about that at the Public Safety Committee meeting now, level now, and we'll see how that progresses. Those are some ideas with respect to revenues. Now let's talk about the other side of the ledger. Let's talk about expenditures. How do we continue to work to control and reduce growth in our expenditures? And some of these suggestions, some of these suggestions involve spending money in the short term in order to realize a long-term gain, and I'll do my best to highlight those. One idea, and again, these are ideas, exploring options for service sharing with other municipalities. And this doesn't have to be full-scale regionalization. You know, this could be sharing a facility, like a police shooting range, for example, or an animal shelter, sharing a facility with neighboring towns in an effort to control costs. Another idea that we've been talking about for some period of time is converting our utility costs, primarily the MDC ad valorem, from a tax to a user fee. And then a third suggestion here, and this would be one of those where we need to spend some money in the short term to hopefully realize a long-term gain, would be continuing to increase our fund balance to shore up our bond rating. Couple of other ideas here on the expenditure side. Looking at our capital projects, you know, that big 12-year plan that we talked about earlier. You know, we issue a fair amount of debt on an annual basis, 12, 13, 14, 15 million dollars of debt per year. We, because of our bond rating, we've received a very favorable interest rate. Interest rates have been low the last several years, so it's been a good model for us. But what could we do, what could we do to fund some of our smaller capital projects in the form of cash going through the CNRE? That's the suggestion I'd like us to take a look at. Another initiative we've been working on for years is continuing to modify our employee benefit programs. Pension, we have a hybrid pension now. Health insurance, health insurance is, you're always looking at plan design, and these two items, and most of these items, understandably, we need to negotiate with our collective bargaining agreements, with our collective bargaining units, excuse me. Another suggestion would be to periodically rebid contracts for goods and services. We do that all the time. We recently got that very good award for refuse hauling. We recently went out to bid for special legal counsel. We've received some favorable rates there. You know, we need to continue to do that good work. And just a couple of more here. These next two, again, would be in the category of increased funding over the short term in order to realize a long-term gain. Continuing to adjust our pension discount rate. We're going to go from 7.5 to 7 and 1/4 this year. We should look at taking that down even further. Increasing the funding ratios in the plan. Why do we want to do these things? We want to do these things so that we don't get caught short, so that we don't get caught short at some point in the future. Looking at shoring up those other post-employment benefit liabilities as well. And could we even explore options, could we explore options to restructure, restructure those major liabilities? At least look at those options. And then another recent suggestion is taking a critical view, a critical review of our major departments and how our operations compare to best practices in our state nationally, et cetera. At the Public Safety Committee, again, we're talking about taking a critical look, taking a critical look at how we provide the paramedic service and other important fire department services. The paramedic program is new. We're a year and a half into it. We're receiving a lot of good feedback about quality of care, but we want to take a look at the delivery model to make sure that we're the most efficient and effective that we could be. And that type of model, we can roll out to other major departments as well. So this is a suggestion for you to consider, starting off, starting off with this budget season, but more importantly, continuing the conversation beyond, because I see this really as a multi-year effort, a multi-year effort to address these issues, building on the work we've been doing for many years now. So let me wrap up, let me wrap up by talking about the process from today. So you are going to review the proposed budget at the committee level. You know, the various committees, public safety, human services, community planning, and admin technology and others. You know, you're going to review the departmental budgets for the departments assigned to you. If you have any recommended changes, any recommended changes, we want you to transmit those to the Finance and Budget Committee. The Finance and Budget Committee will be busy working on non-departmental issues, other major issues like the capital plan, pension, debt service, et cetera. On the town side of the budget, we're going to have two public hearings, one for April 4th and one for April 11th. The one on April 4th is at 6:00, the one on April 11th, and we're trying to accommodate as many constituents as possible, is at 2:00 p.m. The Board of Ed has a couple of workshops planned here as well, March 14th, March 28th. The Board of Ed will conduct a public hearing on its budget on March 28th. The Board of Ed will be looking to adopt the superintendent's budget or its modifications to the superintendent's budget on or around April 3rd. And the council, you will be doing the same, but you will have to bring the entire picture together on April 24th. As of tomorrow, we'll have the full budget loaded on our website. I would ask that, you know, be patient. There are times due to year conflicts, conflicts here where we may need to reschedule a committee meeting or two. However, you will find in your budget binder, Brittany prepared this today, a list of all of our committee meetings and everything that's been scheduled, admin and technology, all the way through education liaison and public hearing. So you should have a hard copy of this in your document there. Last, but certainly not least, I want to commend my colleagues, Peter Privatara, Liz Hewitt, the directors. They've been enormously helpful in putting the proposed budget together this year. I want to thank Peter and Liz in particular for putting up with me as new in my role with new ideas and trying to get a handle on how we do things here. They've been great. They've been fabulous. And Barbara Ruha has worked very hard on this as well. She is out on leave now for the most wonderful of reasons, but I certainly wanted to acknowledge her also. So that completes my formal presentation for this evening. We've got a busy month or so ahead of us. Mayor, I don't know if you want me to take any initial questions regarding process, et cetera. I'll turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Hart, and again, thank you to Peter and Liz and Barbara, and we wish her well. We're thinking about her for all the work that they do. It is not an easy task, and we will be talking much more about that. If you have questions on process, I would, you know, say we could ask those now. If you have any specific things on budget items, we should probably wait on those until we get into committee work, and there will be lots of opportunities to ask questions. So, Mr. Barnes.
Process question? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hart, for your first budget presentation and to your staff as well. Job very well done. I'm sure you know, and you know, how challenging budgets are, particularly of late, so we appreciate your hard work. And now for us here on the council, the next month or six weeks is, you know, the time for hard work and many meetings for us to go over it. But this being your first budget presentation, I was wondering if you could just share with us generally what principles you use to kind of guide you in the preparation of this budget? You know, if there are specific things that you can tell us about, you know, things you wanted to focus on or how you went about, you know, putting the binders together?
Thank you. Thank you for the question, Mr. Barnes. So we started off with issuing a detailed set of instructions to our departmental directors. There are a few key factors. It was important to maintain current services. If folks had a new program that they were excited about, you know, we were willing to discuss but concerned about bringing those forward, given the current budget climate. Also asked for a lot of detail, a lot of backup detail. And our team really prepared almost line item by line item. It said that's basically been my practice, is I want to see what's in individual line items. I just don't want to see a roll forward from year to year. Show me what's in there. Show me what's in there so that you can respond to questions, make adjustments, et cetera. We were able to keep many discretionary line items flat. There were other important objectives that I talked about earlier with respect to fund balance, pension, OPEB, and others. But you know, the biggest challenge, if you will, and really what we tried to impress upon folks, is how can we best balance an increase in taxes? How's that going to impact our community? How can we keep it most manageable? And that was a key message that we talked about throughout. And the team, the team was very collaborative, very cooperative. You know, and we'll talk about this more when we get to the committee level. We made a number of changes, a number of changes to the budgets that were submitted by our directors, and not that they had anything outlandish in them. It was just in an effort to hold the line on expenditures.
Thank you for that. One last question. With respect to the portion of intergovernmental, government revenue, the money that we'd be receiving from the state that's projected, that's included here in this budget, do you have a feeling of, you know, how comfortable or confident you are in us actually receiving that money as we move through the state budget process and any, you know, challenges that they may face which could result in a cut to municipal aid?
Yes. So what we've used, and I'm not sure if I mentioned this in my presentation, I don't think so. We use the governor's most recent estimates that he issued a month or two ago. My sense from attending CCM meetings, and obviously things can change, my sense is that the numbers in the state's adopted budget as revised by the governor, I think they're a good, solid conservative estimate for next year. I'm not sure that would hold true for the out years, but I'm sensing some stability for next fiscal year.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Anybody else? Okay. All right. Let's go to reports from the town manager, number nine. Mr. Hart.
Thank you, Mayor. I've been doing a lot of talking this evening, so I'll make this very, very short. So we've issued copies of my report, and Mayor, most of pages three and four are yours, following my report here. We've got our upcoming meetings, and I'm sorry, we forgot to add the March 26 one. We will do that and send out a corrected version. Finance and Budget will be meeting on March 26th. Moving on to the Yukon Project, the visioning forum that we conducted, thought it was very successful. We had approximately 2,700 people take the online survey, great response to provide input regarding future uses. And then we had roughly 300 people attend the four forums we had. We had three on February 28th, and then we had a follow-up one at the Bishop's Corner Neighborhood Association meeting this past Friday. A West Hartford Community TV, they were kind enough to film our four o'clock presentation on the 28th, and that has been, that's available now off of our website. The feedback we received from folks in attendance on the 28th was very positive, generally very positive. Folks were pleased with the fact that, you know, the council was making a proactive effort here to solicit their opinion. And we talked about the fact that, you know, the university could sell this property near term and what would be the reason and the purpose behind this community visioning exercise. And we talked about how important this information would be for any new buyer and also how it would be a key resource for the council when you are viewing or reviewing future land use decisions on that site. So that event went very well. I want to thank our community development staff, Todd Dumay in particular, as well as the consulting team from Mylone and McBrew. I thought they all did a very good job during that period. We'll be preparing a draft report, including a draft vision statement for the property that we would like to submit to the Economic Development Subcommittee towards the end of this month. Moving on, we've been dealing, as you know well, with a variety of winter storms over the last week or so. We've got one coming later tonight and tomorrow. They've been a challenge for our public works and public safety crews to deal with and plant and facilities as well, but I do want to commend them for an excellent job. You know, we had that first weekend, March, over March 1st, March 1st, March 2nd, that was very challenging. And right on the heels of that, we had this Storm Elsa with a heavy wet snow where we lost a lot of power. Many communities in other parts of the state were affected more heavily. But our team did an excellent job, in my view, responding to these things. We have, however, as you see here, just about exhausted our storm control, our snow removal budget for the current fiscal year. Last thing I want to highlight is we recently received a couple of neat awards. Liveability.com listed us in the top 100 best places to live in the country. We're the only municipality from Connecticut to make the list, so that is a pretty neat, pretty neat acknowledgement there. And we made the best places to live in Connecticut. That's awarded by NICH. I think West Hartford has been on that list for some period of time, and for 2018, we are in first place. So that's just, I think, an important acknowledgement of our good efforts every day to provide good quality services to our community. But even more importantly, you know, everything our residents do, our businesses do, to make, our school district does, to make our community a great one. That completes my report. Mayor, happy to take any questions council members may have.
Thank you, Mr. Hart, and those really are things we should be very proud of and cannot lose sight of. You know, a budget's always sobering, and, you know, we have to deal with the realities that we are handed, and one of them is happening tonight. But these things are really important, an understanding on what other people think of our community. Any questions for Mr. Hart? Ms. Kerrigan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Hart, about two weeks ago, there was an incident at a Hall Connord game, ice hockey game. A whole high student suffered severe injuries, broken eye sockets, broken nose, over six hours of neurosurgery. He's still not back at school. He's still not back at school, chronic headaches. We've received emails, we've had, I've had phone calls and the overriding question seems to be, what are we doing as a town to protect our kids? And are we turning this into a real teaching moment? No doubt, you know, Drew Booth forever will experience this. So some of the questions that are being asked is, you know, if in fact this is a legal, a legal hit, should it be legal hit? And if an individual is a chronic offender of this, for instance, in football, my son played, I know helmet-to-helmet hits were illegal. If a student was failing, he could not play the game. So are we tracking things like that when it comes to these sports and, and what are we doing to be sure that all of our, all of our, our players, our students are protected by our town and in our school?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. As you know, most of the issues relating to that, that incident do more directly involve the superintendent of schools and, and the Board of Ed and, and the district. And I, I trust and value their judgment here. I think they have responded in a very responsible way, as have both, both school communities, you know, from what I have been able to observe. And I understand the, the recent game that they played, the steps that the two teams took, that the players took, that the coaches took, working with the superintendent and others, I think really demonstrate how folks take this as, as a serious issue. It was a, it was certainly a tragic accident, but I, I think it is one that the community takes seriously and has learned from and is, and is moving forward. So I do really want to thank my colleagues on the fourth floor for the good, the good work they've done here.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we, again, we all extend our thoughts and, and wishes and, and powerful, and understanding how hard it is for a family and, and a community to go through a situation where one of their own has been so, so severely hurt. So I am, we're thinking about them very much. I was just reminded that we never voted on the public hearing, so we have to go back up to item number eight and vote on that. So would you, would you like to make a motion? We already moved it, you already moved it, so just...
Make a motion that we vote on the...
Yeah, so just, we'll, we'll be voting on it and we never, you never seconded it, Mr. David Opperman?
I second a motion to set the dates for the public hearings.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Any other questions for the Town Manager? Mr. Barnes?
Just one comment. I wanted to echo your, your comments for the Public Works Department during these storms. I think sometimes it, you know, it may go unrecognized that when we have storms like this and we're busy and we have to get out to work, that when we walk out of our house, the, the street is plowed or, you know, cleared and, you know, we don't realize that, you know, at 1:00 in the morning, the crew was called in to go, you know, put salt down on the road if, if they're, they're icy or to clear the snow. I think they do an excellent job and just want to recognize their hard work. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. I was going to say the exact same thing and the back-to-back nature of these storms, it's just been a one, two, three punch and coming at very difficult hours and very difficult conditions and the added issue of downed trees and removal and all, all of that. So we are very, very grateful for the hard work that they are doing. And I do get, I get pictures comparing us to other communities and we really do a very good job compared to some of our surrounding communities. So again, very greatly appreciated. Anything else for Mr. Hart? Okay, so we will go on to number 10, which is announcements. Food pantry is in critical need of food and we just talked about nutrition. We're, they're almost out of rice, baked beans, and very low on canned pastas, Spaghettios, one of my kids' favorites, and canned fruit. Donations can be dropped off the Town Hall Lobby Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 4:30. Actually, Jason Jakobowski, the CEO of, of Food Share and I joined a group from Hall High School that were on a hunger, they were on a hunger strike sort of, as a, as a, a, an active understanding of what children go through that are hungry and how they, really how difficult it is to concentrate at school. They really, they went six to six and they were very, very engaged and we talked about West Hartford and the makeup of our community and how people think that we might not be affected, many people in our community by food insecurity, but it's very, very true. So keep up the good work and, and this is something that we continue to, to be challenged to, to meet. A friendly visitor volunteer needed for a homebound veteran. Do you have one or two hours per week to become a friendly visitor to a charming 95-year-old gentleman who has recently become homebound? He lives in West Hartford, he has lived in West Hartford for his whole life, has a lot of life experiences, enjoys meeting new people, is a great conversationalist and is proud of his military service. To learn more, contact Barbara Roberts, Social Services Volunteer Coordinator. It sounds like it would be an incredibly rewarding experience. West Hartford Art League College Scholarship. Two scholarships are being offered to high school seniors living in the greater Hartford area who are pursuing a major in fine arts at a college or university in the fall of 2018. Deadline to apply is March 23rd. For more details, go to westharfordart.org/scholarships. Art Beat 2018, West Hartford Public Schools Art Beat Exhibit, which showcases the artistic talents of its students, is now on display at the two West Hartford Art League galleries. The hours are 1:00 to 4:00, Thursday through Sunday. The opening reception has been rescheduled to Wednesday, March 21st. Connord High School's You're in Town the Musical. The title is awful, but the show is terrific. Built as a satire of musical theater itself, audiences may recognize early on that each song is a spoof of other well-known musicals. It's really a fun show. It's wickedly funny, fast-paced, touchingly honest comedic romp. The show continues March 16th, 17th, 7:00 P.M. Tickets are $18 for adults, $15 for children and students. Tavern nights. A Taste of Ireland, join the Noah Webster House on March 16th or 17th for its popular tavern night in honor of St. Patrick's Day. This annual event includes a traditional Irish dinner, drinks, and live entertainment. The Coogan School of Irish Dance will entertain the traditional Irish dances. Tickets are $40, $35 for members and go to www.nohawebsterhouse.org. Stop Time Dance Theater's 50th, 15th Anniversary Show, opening night is Friday, March 16th at 8:00 P.M. at Playhouse on Park. This year's production encompasses the spirit and vigor of Stop Time Dance Theater's family of talented entertainers. The show runs through March 25th and tickets range from 25 to 40. All seats are reserved. Hall High Pops and Jazz Concert, 60th Anniversary Production, continues March 16th and 17th at 7:30 at Hall High School. Tickets are $18 for adults and $15 for students. For more information, go to www.hallhighjazz.com. Festival of Women Voices, the West Hartford Women's Corral will host Festival of Women Voices, March 24th, 4:00 P.M. Connord High School. World-renowned composer Joan Simko, I'm not sure how to say that, will conduct all five choirs and musical pieces she has written. A free will donation benefits the Aurora Foundation. For more information, go to www.whwcorral.org. A Night of Universal Laughter, couldn't we all use some laughs right now? Well, the Universalist Church of West Hartford is hosting a Night of Universal Laughter. Tonight, Improv Comedy Fest, Friday, March 23rd and Saturday, March 24th at 7:00 P.M. General admission, tickets are $15. How-To Festival, this is the second annual, is Saturday, March 24th. That's a busy day and happens to be a wedding anniversary, too. 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 P.M., Noah Webster Library, 20 South Main Street. Over 30 presenters will share information on gardening, quilling, fly fishing, vegan desserts, meditation, pottery-making, cake decorating, belly dancing, and much more. It really is an interesting place to be. Visit www.westharfordlibrary.org. Also on March 24th, which is not on here, is the Foundation for West Hartford Public Schools fundraiser, Celebrity Chef. Many of us will be there. And also, this Saturday morning at 10:00 a.m. at the, at Mohegan Sun Arena, Hall High School Girls Basketball Team will be playing in the state championship. They have not won a state championship since 1977, when I was a senior in high school, which is, I'm dating myself. So I am very excited and if anyone wants to join me and go, I would love to. So it's a really, really exciting, and we congratulate the team, the coach. These are great, great girls and it's a very exciting thing. Anybody else have other, Mr. Barnes?
Of course, what Charity mentioned, she was the center on that basketball team.
Yeah.
One more play, Into the Woods, presented by Northwest Catholic. On March 23rd, 4th, and 5th, the Northwest Catholic Drama Tours will take its audience on a wondrous adventure through famous fairy tales that have ignited imaginations for over two centuries. Stories that have both enriched and frightened their listeners. These tales from the Brothers Grimm have made their way into our collective conscience. Eerie woods and evil witch, mysterious characters and themes of longing and loss weave through this Tony Award-winning musical that Northwest Catholic will bring to life. Again, so that's Friday, the 23rd, Saturday, the 24th, Sunday, the 25th. Shameless plug, my daughter Mary Charlotte is the baker's wife. Neil will say I'll be there all three nights, except for Celebrity Chef.
Very nice.
Thank you.
That's wonderful. Not as scary a name as yours. Anyway, anybody else have anything? No announcements? Okay. With that, we will go reports from Corporation Council. Mr. Leir?
I have no formal report. We do not need an executive session. Happy to answer any questions.
Wonderful, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Leir? No? Okay, thank you very much. Appointments, Mr. Barnes has two, I think.
Thank you. I make a motion that we appoint Adam Keating as alternate member to the Board of Assessment Appeals for a term ending 12/31/2020 and John Johnson as a member to the Veterans Commission for a term ending 20/31/2020. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Number 17, Ms. Kerrigan?
I move adoption of the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Number 18, Ms. Kerrigan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move, we receive notice of the Town Planner's intention to approve pursuant to Section 177-44C9 in request on behalf of St. Elizabeth Manor II Incorporated. Owners of the Court of St. James, revisions to the approved special development district plan, SDD number 38, located at 142 to 146 South Main Street. The request is for minor architectural changes to accommodate the installation of a flush-mounted roof solar electric system.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Number 19.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move, we receive notice of a Town Planner's intention to approve pursuant to Section 177-44C9 in request on behalf of the Mercy Community at Macaulay for revisions to the approved special development district plan, SDD number 33, located at 253 Steel Road. The request is for minor changes to architecture and accessory uses and structures, all of which are associated with overall building renovations.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Number 20, Ms. Kerrigan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move, we receive the resignation from Melinda Montovani from the Advisory Commission for Persons with Disabilities.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. And thank you, Melinda, for your service. No petitions, no executive session. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.